A city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for February 28th, 2020. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Do we stand or do we not?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Amanda Weaver.
Thank you.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Corey Stites.
Present.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Rachel Hulteen.
Present.
Val Nosler Beck.
Present.
And Ms. Hutchinson has notified us she is unable to attend this evening. Mr. Mayor, we have seven of eight council members present. There is a quorum.
Thank you very much, and councillors, we appreciate you all being here tonight. You have in your packet the city council meeting minutes for February 14th, 2020, and the special study session notes from that same night. Unless I hear corrections, we'll let those stand as presented. Hearing none, that will be approved as presented with our thanks to the clerk. You have your agenda before me. Without any objections, we'll let the agenda stand as presented. So ordered. We're really pleased to have a proclamation tonight in support of International Women's Day on March 8th and Women's History Month on March 2020. And I'm really pleased to have with us tonight two women who have done great service for our community. And I'm talking about our former mayor, Gretchen Servini, who was mayor from 1997 until 2005, and the mayor Joyce J., who served on city council from 2009 until 2013, and as our mayor from 2013 to 2017. Thank you both for being here. And I wanted to note some of the accomplishments during Mayor Servini's tenure. We issued certificates of participation for the construction of the Wheat Ridge Rec Center, and I think that was a pretty outstanding accomplishment to get that done. She was instrumental in establishing a professional personnel staff for the city, the establishment of the Wheat Ridge Cultural Commission. We had a successful ballot issue in 2004 for a sales and use tax increase, and we also accomplished the annexation and the zoning for the property of what is now Clear Creek Crossing. And that, you know, that's a really valuable, it seems like a long time ago that that happened. But we really appreciate Mayor Servini's work in doing that. And Mayor Joyce J. had a number of things happening in her tenure in office. We had in 2016 a successful sales and use tax increase in a bond for the Two-Eave Bond Project. She was instrumental in forming our Sustainable Wheat Ridge Group, which is a great success in the city. Thank you very much, Mayor J. The preservation and redevelopment of the Fruitdale School, which is an outstanding project, an affordable housing component, the establishment of our regional communication center, JeffCom, and that's a great asset to our community, and the Kipling Ridge redevelopment program, we're bringing Sprouts and Starbucks to 38th and Kipling. So Mayor J., thank you for the work that you've done in our community. So now I want to read the proclamation tonight in support of International Women's Day on March 8th and recognition of Women's History Month in March of 2022. Whereas March 8th is recognized as International Women's Day, celebrating women's achievements and increasing visibility while casting out inequality. And whereas International Women's Day celebrates the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women across the globe and makes a call to action for accelerating women's equality. And whereas, since 1995, every U.S. president has marked March as Women's History Month. And whereas, in 1920, several generations of women's suffrage supporters lectured, wrote, marched, and lobbied to achieve ratification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution, giving women the right to vote. And whereas, while the right to vote is a common topic of study in classrooms, there are many more issues, perspectives, and accomplishments that require investigation across history, literature, and the arts to more fully appreciate and understand the history of women in the United States. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge recognizes the importance of contributions made by women and is committed to increasing visibility of women and their accomplishments in creating equal opportunities while identifying and eliminating inequality whenever encountered in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, the mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council formally designate March 8th, 2022, as International Women's Day and the month of March as Women's History Month, dated this 28th day of February 2020. And I would like to bring Mayor Servini and Mayor J. into the conversation. If one of you would like to say any remarks, we're happy to have you say a few things to our viewing audience tonight. Mayor J., do you want to kick it off?
I'd be happy to do that. Hello, of course. Thank you for inviting me, along with my previous heroine, Mayor Gretchen Servini. She was the reason that I ran for council and got on the Cultural Commission, the whole thing. Indeed, I appreciate that Wheat Ridge does recognize the contributions of women. I experienced it, as I'm sure did Gretchen, both as an elected official and Wheat Ridge always encourages female employment in both policymakers, backup personnel. I think about Joyce Mannwaring. She was director of Parks and Recreation, Heather Geier, now city manager in Northland. So Wheat Ridge values women leading and contributing to boards and commissions as well. I am proud to be a former mayor of Wheat Ridge. I hope women viewing this will continue to fully manifest their dreams and plans so we can enjoy their potential. Thanks again for inviting me.
Thank you so much, Mayor J. Mayor Servini?
Oh, yes, I'll have to echo what Mayor J. has said. Yes, it was an exciting time. It was a lot of work, but we have accomplished so much in the past eight years. And I agree that women have contributed a lot more and has been more accepted since I first ran. And I'm so proud of Wheat Ridge. I mean, I could just stay here in my little bubble in Wheat Ridge. I'm so blessed, so blessed. And I'm just excited to see more participation, and people really, really care about the community. They really care about the community. So I am excited and encourage people to get involved because that makes the difference. And plus that you meet all these great people. That's what I miss the most, I think, about not being mayor, is I just had so many people at the city and people in the metro area that I knew. So, yes, you can do this. You can do this. And thank you so much for letting me have the proclamation. I really appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Mayor Servini and Mayor J. for joining us tonight. We appreciate you being here tonight. We appreciate the work that you've done in our community in years past and I'm sure still support the work that goes on of this council and the people of our city. And, you know, I will be happy to recognize that three-quarters of our city council now are women, and I appreciate the hard work that they do. We may need to incentivize some men to sort of step up and become active again in our civic life, but we certainly have great leadership going on. So anyway, thank you all. With that, we will move to our public's right to speak. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item that is not on the agenda during this council meeting. We have a special study session after this meeting, and I am going to open up the public's right to speak for any item that is on that agenda item, which is about our navigation program. So if you would like to speak on the navigation program at our study session, you may do so now. We will not be taking public comment later on that. But any item that is on the agenda or not on the agenda is open for discussions, and we can bring you into the meeting on the Zoom format. If you would like to raise your hand in the Zoom format, if you will hit star nine, that will raise your hand, I believe, on the telephone. And I think Ms. Scheck is going to monitor that and see if we have anyone from the public who would like to speak tonight, either during the regular meeting or on the special study session agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. We start off with Pat Quinn with Brad Cook on deck.
All right, Pat Quinn. You'll unmute yourself when you start to speak. Before you start to speak, if you would please give us your first name and your last name, if you would please spell your last name, and give us an address, and then you'll have three minutes to present. And I believe our mayor pro tem will be running our timing device on that. So Ms. Quinn or Ms. Quinn, at your convenience, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Pat Quinn, last name Q-U-I-N-N. I live wonderful District 3, 3995 Moore Street. Mr. Mayor, City Council, esteemed guests, former council members, and mayors, I've been a resident of Wheat Ridge since about 1991, so I recognize a lot of you, and thank you for this proclamation, by the way. Diversity is strength in leadership. I really believe that. Mr. Mayor, I've been a member of IBW Local Union 111 since 1991, actually, and I'm the two-term president, running for a third term. Our members are the contractors and utility companies that keep the electricity on and fix the gas leaks. When they're out there safely and effectively, we bring you safe and reliable power all the time. And out of our union, the IBW was originally started 125-plus years ago for safety. And safety is a big reason why we have our union, and we have a voice at the table, and we bargain our contracts, and safety is a priority. So saying all that, I'm here tonight in support of my sisters and brothers in the public sector because I want them to be able to bargain like us for their safety and their needs. The Public Worker Collective Bargaining Bill provides a transparent and fairway for all public workers to join together if they choose to be recognized by their employer. And I believe if workers choose, excuse me, I believe if workers in the city choose to join together and bargain for a contract, that that shouldn't be any more controversial than the many other contracts the cities enter into. We were likely to have contracts for copier services, for cleaning, and for top-level jobs such as the mayor, excuse me, not the mayor, we elect you, right, the chief of police, and the city manager. Collective bargaining has worked in Wheat Ridge, too. In 2014, the firefighters in Wheat Ridge negotiated their first contract, raising wages from minimum wage to $13.34 an hour, and healthcare for all firefighters. And in 2016, Wheat Ridge merged with West Metro, and the firefighters protecting Wheat Ridge continue to have a contract. And we want other workers to have this choice as well. I want to thank you for your time today and asking for your support of the Public Employee Collective Bargaining Bill, and appreciate your time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Ms. Scheck, our next speaker?
Thank you, Mayor. And we have Brad Cook.
Okay, Mr. Cook, if you'd introduce yourself and give us your address, and then you can continue.
Mr. Cook, if you can hear me, you're on mute.
I think I am set now. My name is Brad Cook, C-O-O-K. I live at 3995 Ammon Street here in Wheat Ridge. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, guests, other Wheat Ridge residents. I've lived in Wheat Ridge for about 10 years now. I'm a former Teamster. In the past, I was also manager at the city and county of Denver. I'd like to illustrate a stark contrast I've seen for a worker supported by a union and one who isn't. Meetings for disciplinary actions or employee termination, I'd sit in a room at a table with a couple senior human resources staff and a city lawyer. On the other side of that table, almost always, was a single person unless they're represented by a union. I see that as an imbalance of power and resources, and it's something that the employees of Wheat Ridge could avoid if they were able to unionize. I want to live in a Wheat Ridge that attracts and retains the best staff, and allowing collective bargaining is one component of that. It will ensure decent wages and benefits and address inequalities in wages that may exist between genders and races, and will also provide a uniform way for addressing employee concerns. These are issues that are often at the core of decisions made when looking for work or deciding to stay at a job. And the ability to unionize should not differ between the private sector and government employment. I'd like the people who maintain critical infrastructure and provide a myriad of city services in Wheat Ridge to be happy, engaged, and productive. In government, priorities can drastically change every few years as elected officials come and go. This makes the continuity and institutional knowledge provided by a stable workforce even more important. I now work for the state of Colorado. It made me very happy when, in 2020, state employees were granted collective bargaining rights. But across the state at other levels of government, we have only a patchwork of jurisdictions that have granted collective bargaining rights. So I'm asking that Wheat Ridge be one of those places. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Scheck, do we have another caller on the line?
Mayor, we don't have any other hands up.
Okay. Give it one more second, see if anybody puts their hand up. If you'd like to speak under public's right to speak, now you may do it. Please raise your hand. Do you want anyone with their hand up?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we're going to close our public's right to speak, and thank you for your comments. We will go to agenda item number one. Councillor Hoppy, would you please introduce agenda item number one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to present the consent agenda, item 1A, motion to cancel the March 14th, 2022, regular meeting of the city of Wheat Ridge City Council. Regular meeting of March 14th, 2022 currently does not have any scheduled agenda items. Two council members, the city manager and administrative services director, will be attending the National League of Cities Congressional Conference in Washington, D.C. from March 14th to March 16th. It is recommended that city council cancel this meeting. Item 1B, resolution number 082022, a resolution approving amendment number two to the contract with the Colorado Department of Transportation for the improved Wadsworth project. In 2015, the city was awarded funding through the Denver Regional Council of Governments, Dr. Cog, transportation improvement program tip to improve Wadsworth Boulevard from 34th Avenue to 38th Avenue. An agreement with CDOT to administer the funding was approved in 2015. An amendment to the original 2015 agreement was approved in 2020 to add funds for additional funding sources to the project budget and to extend the term of the contract with CDOT to October 25th, 2020. In '21, funds from four additional funding sources were obtained, so a second amendment is necessary to add those funds to the project budget. Consent agenda item 1C, motion to amend the contract for right-of-way acquisition services for the improved Wadsworth project with HDR Engineering, Inc., Denver, Colorado, for additional fees in the amount of $151,810.54 for a total cost of $1,804,912.82. At issue, a contract with HDR Engineering, Inc. was originally executed in 2018 and then amended in 2021 for right-of-way acquisition services for the improved Wadsworth project. Due to additional tasks added to the scope of work primarily associated with assistance with eminent domain proceedings, a contract amendment needs to be executed to provide the funds necessary to complete the right-of-way acquisitions for the project.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items 1A through 1C.
Second. A second by Mr. Stites. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, and will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously, seven to nothing.
Thank you so much. We will go to agenda item number two. Councillor Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 06-2022, a resolution approving the First Amendment to an enhanced sales tax incentive program agreement with Applejack Wine and Spirits LLC. At issue, city council approved an enhanced sales tax incentive program, E-Step, agreement with Applejack Wine and Spirits LLC, Applejack, on August 10th, 2020. The agreement requires the city to share 100% of increment generated from 3% tax rate for a period of 10 years or not to exceed the amount of, and I assume there's some numbers missing on this, 990, is it thousand or million?
Thousand, yeah, 998,146.
Okay, thank you. Whichever occurs first. The increment is all sales tax revenues above the base amount as defined in section 4B of the agreement. The base was set at $42,417,000 in the original agreement. Applejack is requesting an amendment to the agreement to decrease the base amount to $41,889,587 to a difference of $527,413 to reflect actual sales for the 12-month period before the agreement was approved by city council.
Thank you very much. This will be a resolution of the council. It is a public hearing, and I am going to open the public hearing. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this in excess of what, well, you have a staff presentation on this?
Just real briefly, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Stites read the issue statement, which is, pretty much covers it, but S-Step, the enhanced sales tax incentive program, is all based on a base amount of sales or sales tax generated by the city, and then a business makes improvements to their business with the hope of increasing the sales and the sales tax to the city, of course. And in this case, city council agreed to share that increment, 100% of that increment, back with Applejack to help pay for some of those public improvements that they recently made to their store. If you haven't seen it, it's beautiful. But they did an audit of their numbers. The base is based on a 12-month period before the agreement is approved, and after they looked at their actual sales, they realized their base was a little bit lower than that was in the agreement, lower by $527,413. And the sales tax, when you compute that at 3%, the annual sales tax would be lower by about $15,822. So essentially, if you approve this, their annual base for sales tax generated will be $15,822 less, so they could potentially receive a little bit more money on an annual basis if they generate more than this new base. So hopefully that explains it. It's a little complicated, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you so much. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open this up to the public. If you would like to speak on this agenda item number two, you may do so at this time by raising your hand in the Zoom format, and I'll ask Ms. Scheck if we have anyone with their hands raised.
We don't, Mayor. Nope.
And if you're on the telephone, you may hit star nine, and that will raise your hand, and we'll bring you into the meeting there also. And I'll give it another couple of seconds here to see if anyone raises their hand. Okay, and there's no one speak on this from the public, so I will open this up for questions from council. If you have a question, please raise your hand, and we'll call on you. And I don't see anyone, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And Councilman Stites, may I please have a motion?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number 06-2022, a resolution approving the First Amendment to an enhanced sales tax improvement program agreement with Applejack Wine and Spirits LLC.
Second.
A second by Councillor Hoppy. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, and will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. This will take us to agenda item number three. Councillor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to amend the contract for engineering consulting services for Phase 2 of the improved Wadsworth project with HDR Engineering Incorporated, Denver, Colorado, for additional design fees in the amount of $169,463.51 for a total contract amount of $2,974,096.83. At issue, construction of the improved Wadsworth project is being completed in two phases. A contract with HDR Engineering Incorporated was originally executed in 2018 to complete the construction plans for the entire corridor. A contract amendment was done in 2020 for HDR to prepare the bid package for Phase 1 of construction from 41st Avenue to I-70. An additional amendment to the HDR contract is required to complete construction plans for Phase 2 of construction from 35th Avenue to 41st Avenue.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Mr. Westbrook's here, but I think this one's really self-explanatory. We wanted to get construction plans ready for, in case we find the money to do Phase 2, and we're going to come to council here very soon to talk about that. So if you have any questions for Mark, he's here.
Okay. Before we go to questions from council, I will open this up to the public. If you would like to speak on this agenda item number three, now is your opportunity to do so. If you would please raise your hand in the Zoom format or hit star nine, and that will raise your hand. If you're on the telephone, we're happy to bring you into the meeting. We'll see if anyone has raised their hands. Ms. Scheck?
Nope, no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, I'll give it another couple of seconds here for people to find their raise-hand button if you need it. It's down at the bottom of your screen in the middle, but we don't seem to have anyone wishing to speak, so we'll close our public's right to speak on this item and open it up to questions from council. If you have a question, please raise your hand. We'll go with Councillor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. I did not read every fine print detail on this, but I'm curious what the timeline would be for these plans to be ready.
There is a schedule, a very brief schedule included in the council packet. Assuming council approves this tonight, it takes us a few weeks to get the contracts in order, and then we start the repackaging effort. in order, and then we start the repackaging effort in mid-March. We'd hopefully complete that around mid-July, so it takes about four months to, to get that all put together. It's, it's a very large set of plans, and the process of doing that, we're combining some of the stuff that's in the current plan, so it's all one cohesive thing. So we would then submit that to CDOT for clearances. We'd hope to get those in about a month. They've reviewed all this. It's not new design, it's just a, a repackage thing, and then hopefully, we could, we could have that done and get pricing from the contractor and include this in the current contract before the, the work that they're doing now starts south of Forty-first. They're doing utility relocations right now, south of Forty-first, before the actual construction work starts south of Forty-first, where we want to get this added before then, and they're planning on doing that in November, according to their current schedule.
That sounds good. Part of why I ask is just, I know that there, I know the city's been working really hard to pursue the additional funding through a variety of different measures. Through my work, I know that both CDOT and Dr. Cog are receiving significant tranches of funds that they're going to be opening up calls for project this fall, both the regional and subregional. So, you know, having these ready, I know that the more shovel-ready and the more local matching funds that are available, the, the hotter we are as a project to get awarded additional funds. So I'm excited to see this move forward, so hopefully, we can attract additional investment in the city.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the memo, it says staff is estimating at least five hundred thousand dollars savings will be saved in the current Phase One if the contract of Phase Two can be added before the work has started. Can you, can you maybe just explain what some of the work is that, that we want to get this done with, before that work gets done, and, and do you feel that's a reasonable timeline?
Yeah, so there is, in the current contract, there's an interim work included south of Forty-first, and that interim work is the, there's medians that are being built south of Forty-first that will be from Forty-first all the way down to Thirty-fifth. There's, the, the pavement is in, not in great condition, south of Forty-first, and so we, there was a plan to overlay, in the current contract, there's a plan to overlay everything between Thirty-fifth and Forty-first. And then there's a retaining wall that needs to be built. If you drive by there today, you'll see why there's a retaining wall that needs to be built. There was a little berm there that's now about half gone for the utility work. We need to build a retaining wall there. Well, that's the location of a future noise wall. So if we can get this, this new stuff added before they build that retaining wall, then they don't have to build a retaining wall, we save the expense of doing that. So those are the, those are those three interim things that would, would not need to be done in Phase One.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, seeing none, we will close our question period, and Counsel, Counselor Dozeman, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to amend the contract for engineering consulting services for Phase Two of the improved Wadsworth project with HDR Engineering Incorporated, Denver, Colorado, for additional design fees in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-one cents, for a total project cost of two million, nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, ninety-six dollars and eighty-three cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Holteen. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, and will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Westburg and Mr. Nguyen for joining us tonight. We appreciate you being here. All right, that will take us to agenda item number four. Counselor Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Resolution Number ten dash twenty twenty-two, resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Wheat Ridge Water District regarding the dedication of right-of-way for district facilities. At issue, the city has been working for several, several years with the Wheat Ridge Water District to replace their water mains and other facilities during the reconstruction of Wadsworth Boulevard between Thirty-eighth Avenue and Interstate Seventy. Several of the district's facilities are located within the property that the city acquired for the overall project. This memorandum of understanding memorializes the city's commitment to debt, to dedicate the necessary property as right-of-way for the district's facilities.
Thank you very much. This will be a resolution of the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
I'll let Mr. Westburg handle this one. I don't have anything, but Mark may have a little bit more to add or answer questions.
Mr. Westburg.
Yeah, so this one, this was, we're trying to get approval from Denver Water, and Denver Water won't give Wheat Ridge Water approval of the plans that they've done until the right-of-way has been accepted by the city. We've not accepted the right-of-way because we're still acquiring one more piece of right-of-way. We have a trial at the end of March to hopefully resolve that and get that done, at which point we'll come to council and have you all accept the, the right-of-way, and then we'll turn over the necessary right-of-way to CDOT, the stuff that's along Wadsworth. So apparently, Denver Water got burned sometime in the past, and so they want this MOU just basically memorializing the commitment of the city to treat all this property bought as right-of-way.
Okay. And this will allow us to move forward in a more expeditious manner, I assume.
It allows Wheat Ridge Water to start their work because they can't start it until they've got the, the stuff done, and it's, it's not critical path yet, but it will be soon, which is why we're here before you instead of waiting until after the end of March.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, we'll go to the public for any comment on this agenda item number four. You may speak on this item now if you would like to. If you would please raise your hand in the Zoom format or dial star nine on the telephone, we'll bring you into the meeting. I'll check with Ms. Shek to see if we have anyone, anyone else wanting to join us tonight on this item.
No, not tonight, Mayor. I don't think.
Not tonight, okay. We'll, we'll catch them on another night. So we'll close our, our public's right to speak on this and take any questions from council at this time. Okay, seeing none, Counselor Nosler Beck, may I have a motion on this agenda item number four?
I move to approve Resolution Number ten dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Wheat Ridge Water District regarding the dedication of right-of-way for district facilities.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr., by Counselor Ohm. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand, and will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That will bring us to agenda item number five. Counselor Holteen, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number eleven, twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Jefferson County Open Space to accept a Trails grant in the amount of one hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars for Clear Creek Trail improvements. At issue, the Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership Program is funded by the Jefferson County Open Space Tax and exists to fund trails projects in the county at either twenty-five percent of the project cost for local trails or fifty percent of the project cost for regional trails. The Clear Creek Trail is considered a regional trail. The city of Wheat Ridge was awarded one hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars in funding through this program for two sections of the trail to be upgraded from asphalt to concrete, for repairs and improvements at the Otis Street Trailhead and Trail Connection, and to add wayfinding signage locations and additional safety improvement areas. To receive the funding, the city must accept the grant award by directing the mayor to sign the attached grant agreement.
Thank you very much. This will be a resolution of the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do have Ms. O'Donnell on, our Parks and Recreation Director. She has a few words, maybe?
Okay, Director O'Donnell.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. That summary was pretty succinct, but as you may recall, it, it was last August that we came to council, and you all passed a resolution supporting our application for this grant, and we're pleased that we received the funding, and as Councilmember Holteen mentioned, we received the fifty percent as a regional project, which is really great. And as mentioned, it's funding two sections of the trail that will be upgraded from asphalt to concrete, which is safer and requires less maintenance. We'll see some much-needed repairs to the Otis Street Trailhead with, which many of you may have heard comments about in the past. It certainly came up during the Let's Talk program in the Leblon Manor neighborhood, and we've received phone calls and emails from folks wanting that area improved as well. Additionally, the Wheat Ridge Green Belt Peaks to Plains and Jefferson County Bike Way wayfinding signage and mileage signage will be put in place, and that also came up. The Sustainable Wheat Ridge Transportation Subcommittee came to a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting in May of last year and really requested some additional wayfinding signage, so we were pleased to be able to include that in the grant application as well. And then finally, there's just some general safety signage and other trail safety improvements in this grant. So we're really just asking council to pass this resolution and to accept the grant funds and permit the mayor to sign the grant agreement.
Director O'Donnell, before we go to questions from council, I'll open this up to questions from the public. If you would like to speak on agenda item number five, now is your opportunity. Please raise your hand in the Zoom format at star nine if you're on the telephone, and we'll bring you into the meeting. Okay, I don't see anyone, I don't see anyone joining us tonight to speak on this item, so we will close that portion of our meeting and open it up to any questions from council. And we have a question from Counselor Holteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Karen. I'm curious, for the wayfinding signage, what template are you using? Are you using a template that's consistent with the Jefferson County wayfinding, or are you looking at a new template?
Yes, our staff have been involved in conversations with them over the years with the Peaks to Plains signage, so we definitely want to utilize some of that, and there'll probably be some different as well, but we are definitely trying to stay consistent along the trail.
That would be great. I know, yeah, the, the more consistent the signage, the better for people, especially since it's a regional trail. So, so yeah, that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? Okay, we're going to close the discussion on this, and Counselor Holteen, may I have a motion on this agenda item five?
Yes, I move to approve Resolution Number eleven, twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Jefferson County Open Space to accept a Trails grant in the amount of one hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars for Clear Creek Trail improvements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Ohm. Is there any discussion, discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand, and will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes seven to nothing unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Looks like we're making good progress tonight. Let us move to agenda item number six. This is our motion to approve appointments to boards and commissions, and we will, with District One, and I would like to recognize Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion to approve appointments to boards and commissions for District One. I move to appoint Betty Jo Page to the Board of Adjustment, term ending three-two-twenty-five. A further move to appoint Morgan Richards to Liquor Licensing Authority, term ending three-two-twenty-five. A furthermore move to approve Ralph Haben to the Parks and Recreation Commission, term ending three-two-twenty-five. I move to approve Jonathan Schlecki to the Planning Commission, term ending three-two-twenty-five. And I move to approve Jerry DiTulio to the Planning Commission, term ending three-two-twenty-four, to fill the vacant seat.
And Counselor Hutchinson could not be here. Do I have another counselor that would second that motion?
A second.
Okay, we have a second by Counselor Holteen. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand, and will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We'd like to go to District Two. Counselor Holteen, would you please motion these?
Thank you, Mayor Starker. I move to appoint the following. Thomas Bernie to Board of Adjustment, term ending three-two-twenty-five. Jason McCullough to the Building Code Advisory Board, term ending three-two-twenty-five. Beth Kelly to the Cultural Commission, term ending three-two-twenty-four. Rocco Germano to the Liquor Licensing Authority, term ending three-two-twenty-five. And Julian Stern to the Planning Commission, term ending three-two-twenty-five. And I'd like to make note that we will still have a vacancy opening for the Board of Adjustment since the one applicant in District Two was appointed to the Planning Commission, so we will need to repost that position for applications.
Second.
Okay, thank you. And we have a second by Counselor Ohm. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, and will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We'll go to District Three. Counselor Weaver, would you please make these motions?
Mayor, could I ask that Counselor Stites make them tonight? I'm having trouble seeing my, my screen and reading the.
Happy to. Counselor Stites, are you able to make that motion?
Just give me one second, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I wasn't.
That's okay. Take your time.
I move to approve to the vacant seat in the Cultural Commission, Teresa Linder, and for the District Seat, Liquor Licensing Authority, Lenny Ortiz. I further move to approve to the Parks and Recreation, District Three Seat, Catherine Rooney, and I move to appoint to the Planning Commission Melissa Antle and Will Kearns. Believe that's it.
Okay. Counselor Weaver, are you able to second that motion?
I will second that, yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Stites.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, was it clear on the record, the terms ending for all of those, are the terms ending as reflected in the council packet on the left column?
We'll go to Counselor Stites, are these, the ending dates, terms ending all correct the way they were listed on our?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, they are.
Thank you very much. Should take care of your question, Mr. Dahl?
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hands, and will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed seven to nothing.
Thank you very much. We'll go to District Four. Counselor Dozeman, would you please make these motions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Cindy Shaw to the Liquor Licensing Authority for District Four, term ending three-two-twenty-five.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Nosler Beck. Would all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands, and will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has again passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you so much. That, that concludes our agenda items tonight. We will go now to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mayor. I, we have a study session, special study session coming up, so I'll wait till the end to provide updates then.
Okay, thank you very much. City Attorneys Matters, Mr. Dahl?
Thank you, nothing tonight, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to elected officials matters. I'll start with our clerk, Clerk Kirkpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two quick items. First, about four days after the last council meeting, one of our residents asked for the form that one would use to create an initiative petition to reverse council's decision to change the zoning on West Thirty-Eighth Avenue applied for by the Hill family. I supplied the form. I have heard nothing from any of the members of that group since. The deadline for them to, to turn in signatures is April first, a Friday. First, they will have to come to the clerk's office to get approval for the language they're using in the actual form of the referendum. I have not seen or heard from them about that. Since I had let everyone know we were approached about that, I wanted to let you know where we stand now. Since I had let everyone know we were approached about that, I wanted to let you know where we stand now. The second item is I would like to thank our city staff for their hard work during the recent inclement weather, especially, of course, our people in public works and in the police department for their long and hard work under difficult weather conditions. And we appreciate you more than you know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you clerk Kirk Patrick. We will go to elected officials matters from our councillors. We'll start with councillor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not used to going first. I know. So this last Friday, a very joyous event. It was a one-year celebration for the Porchlight Family Justice Center, who opened their doors just last year, a year ago. And this is a center for victim services. And I just really wanted to thank you, thank several of our local restaurants because they really came through in in a pinch and provided appetizers for that celebration. And so thank you to West 29th, Clancy's, C Plus and Pietra's. And so if you can thank them when you go and visit their establishments, I appreciate it. I'd also like to let you know that we will now have an opening in the Liquor Authority. There will be a vacancy because of the new appointments from this evening for District One. So if anyone would like to serve on that board, that position will be reopened.
Thank you very much. We will go to, let's we'll start at the other end and go to councillor Nosler Beck.
Mayor, a couple of things. First, I wanted to thank everybody for showing up to the forty-fourth Ave subarea plan meeting. I'm at the rec center last week on Wednesday. Just a great conversation and it was so awesome to see so many people. And I just wanted to send, just let staff know that that's a really good time to do those kind of neighborhood gatherings. People were coming off of swim class and and activities at the rec center. And there is just really good participation. People were able to stop in from that area. So thanks to everybody for making it out. And also thanks to everybody for applying for these boards and commissions spots. And I want to thank everybody who also is continuing to serve in their roles. And Patrick, is are we all set? Are people now, if they're serving on board or commission, do they do they get to utilize the rec center?
They will if they apply. And when they get sworn in, we'll work on that, give them the the form they need to fill out.
Great, thank you. And then just one last heads up. I think I'll be talking to Mayor Protem Hulteen about this. But with us canceling the March fourteenth meeting, I had let council know that I was going to be out on the twenty-first and twenty-eighth for a a family trip. And so now I'm going to be not in council for three for three meetings. So I want to kind of take a look and see if there's some opportunities for me to at least maybe not vote, but be able to participate virtually and watch the meeting. So I will keep folks posted on my attendance for those meetings. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Nosler Beck. Councillor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to also thank residents for coming out to the Forty-Fourth Avenue Subarea Plan. It was a really cold evening. I wasn't able to make it. I had a sick kiddo at home and but I really appreciate those that showed up. And I'm really excited for that project to be underway. I have had the opportunity to attend several ribbon cuttings recently with the Chamber of Commerce, including themed party creations in District One near Twenty-Ninth and Sheridan. And I also celebrating the new owner of the Wheat Ridge Lanes. And so we had a really good time bowling over there. And I really appreciate the Wheat Ridge Business Association and the Chamber of Commerce for highlighting our businesses and supporting them and and having ribbon cuttings and really highlighting the businesses within our within our community and and supporting small businesses. So thank you to those organizations and those volunteers that help.
Thank you very much councillor Dozeman. We'll go to councillor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not much tonight. Just councillor Weaver and I had our District Three meeting a couple of weeks ago and went very well at the rec center in person, which was kind of nice. Had some good conversations with District Three, Two and Four members, I believe. And I'm not sure we had anybody from one there, but we we definitely have some some neighbors that are very passionate about about some topics in the neighborhood. So definitely things that we've passed forward as far as some shoveling along Thirty Second, things like that, which leads me to my next thing is as it's been snowing the last couple of weeks, obviously not tonight. But please make sure you take care of your neighbors and your neighborhood. So thank you very much.
And I know they're always passionate to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. So thank you councillor Stites. Councillor Weaver.
Just wanted to echo councillor Stites, thanking people who came out to our meeting a couple of weeks ago. It was it was fun to see everybody in person. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank council members Hutchinson and Dozeman for attending the ribbon cutting. I was there too at the Wheat Ridge Lanes. It was very busy. So thank you to the the people of Wheat Ridge. That is a business that is well loved. And then I got to try Grammy's goodies for the first time. It was really great and went to everybody to if you get a chance. It took me too long to stop by and I'll be back again. And then also to thank Tad and staff at Stylist and Crate for their amazing coffee. This this summer, it was a while back, I did meet with Julie Stern, who's newly appointed to the planning commission. And I'm very excited for her being on that. And I just want to say thank you to Julie for her commitment to the city. And then I did attend the Forty-Fourth Area Subarea Plan. Went around, looked at the boards, chatted with staff. I was actually kind of surprised at some of the support. You could see the stickers that people would show support for. And there were some things such as providing some temporary homeless things. I don't want to get into the details, but I was I was pretty happy that that the citizens were actually taking some interest and were supportive of that. And one last thing is if anybody's interested, I would recommend reading a book called Poetics of Cities. It's probably backwards. I apologize for that. It's an interesting book about cities. If anybody wants to borrow my copy, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to just express my gratitude and just deep honor that our two former female mayors joined us tonight to celebrate just the amazing women that helped lead in the city. I'm oftentimes when I talk about what I get to do in service to my city, I'm I'm always like, and there's six women on our city council. And I'm just, I'm so proud of the strong women that have always been a part of Wheat Ridge. I, you know, I think of Louise Turner, who was one of our founding families and owned the property that now council member Weaver is running and maintaining. So there's an incredible legacy that goes back to the founding of our city that we're carrying forward today. And when I got involved in the city, it was really working closely with Mayor Joyce J., who at the time was my city councilperson. But her passion and dedication and enthusiasm and willingness to just hit the pavement really inspired me about what one person can do when they keep showing up in their community. So I just want to thank those two women in particular and all the women that came before who led to where we are today, which is still a really great, a lot of strong women leading the city. So really grateful for that. I also really want to express my gratitude to the people who were willing to throw their names in for boards and commissions and those who continue to serve. I think almost all of us on the council have served in some respect before getting here. And, you know, every month, hundreds of hours are given in service to the city. And they really are the the rich, important network that connects our city function to our community in so many important ways. So, you know, every one of those hours is appreciated and valued in the diversity and like depth of experience that our citizens bring just makes us a better city every day. So appreciate each of them individually. I'm excited about the District Two candidates that we were able to appoint today. And we'll look forward to celebrating them this fall at the Board and Commissions Dinner. And then the last thing, someone mentioned snow. We've gotten a lot of snow. If you haven't noticed, it's been really snowy this winter. And we've been getting back to back snows and snow is piling up. I am actually, I feel like residents are doing a really good job generally of getting out and shoveling their walks. I continue to be really disappointed in the businesses that hire people to shovel the parking lot snow into the sidewalks. That is just, you know, a huge problem because long after the rest of the snow has melted, there's still a two-foot pile in the middle of the sidewalk. So, you know, businesses doubt you're listening right now. But if you are, please shovel your snow into your own parking lot. When you obstruct the right of way for pedestrians, those mounds of snow don't melt sometimes for weeks. And that is something a wheelchair can't get around without going into the street. So please appreciate the shoveling, keep it out of the right of way for pedestrians and and keep looking out for your neighbors. I've had several neighbors shoveling neighbors' walks to the point where I don't, it's like the star-bellied snitches. I don't know who's shoveling whose walks these days. But I appreciate that about our culture and I think we have more snow coming this weekend. So don't put the shovels away. Thank you.
A little ways to go. Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of our about the end of our meeting. I would like to, I was really, really pleased to recognize March as as Women's History Month and National Women's Day, International Women's Day. I think in my in my generation, one of the greatest accomplishments that we've we've seen is the is the great rise of women in leadership roles in our society. And I think it makes us stronger. I think we we're really able to to advantage all of the all of the talents that our citizens have by by helping and making women be in leader leader positions. And I want to especially thank Mayor Servini and Mayor Joyce J. for joining us tonight and for the work that they've done in our city. I want to thank Mr. Westburg, Mr. Wen and Director O'Donnell for joining us tonight. Always appreciate you all being at our meetings. I want to thank thank the volunteers who were nominated and appointed to our boards and commissions. You serve a vital function in our city. It wouldn't happen and we couldn't function as efficiently as we do without you. And I appreciate your service and I know that our citizens do. I was really pleased to Friday night to attend the Porchlight Ceremony where I want to recognize our councillor Hoppy, who is a member of the Board of Directors of Porchlight. Thank you for serving on that. And that's really been a marvelous program. I remember when when the director came, you know, several years ago, it seems. And we we had a discussion about the vision that she had for bringing all these services together and and making it really available for victims of domestic abuse and violence in the home and how traumatic that is and what we can do to lessen that trauma and make their transition out of that into into normal life and and productivity again. And the vision has been has been fulfilled in that in that structure and in the people that are working for it. So I want to really thank you for your work on it councillor Hoppy and and really congratulate Porchlight for being a great asset to our community. Coffee with the mayor. These months are running by just at a breakneck speed. We're at the end of we're at the end of February now. We have coffee with the mayor on Saturday morning on the March twelfth. We're going to go back live at Vinola's Italian Market in Delhi at Thirty-Eighth and just west of Wadsworth. So I hope you'll be able to join us nine o'clock, nine to ten. And lastly, you know, whether the weather is is good like it was today and maybe a few days next week, or we've got snow and it's icy and cold, please watch out for all of the pedestrians, particularly the youngsters and kids that are out on the streets. Hopefully, they're taking advantage of the longer days and the good weather to be outside playing. So please watch out for them and drive safely through our city. That's going to conclude our meeting. I'm going to adjourn this meeting. And we're going to convene here back in five minutes for a special study session. So it will be about eight minutes after eight, so eight oh eight. We'll see you all right back here. Thank you. To order the special study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for February 28th, 2022. We have one item, one, one agenda item, a update on our homeless navigation program. We took a public comment on this study session before our regular meeting. So we will not take any further comment on this. And I'd like to go now to Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're excited to be here this evening to give an update on our homelessness efforts. And we have several staff members here and Kelly with Barker with the Jefferson County. So I'll turn it over to Mary Ann to introduce this topic.
Perfect. Good evening. I'm Mary Ann Schilling. We are joined here tonight by Rebecca Radabaugh, our homeless navigator, as well as Kelly Barker, the regional homeless coordinator for Jefferson County Human Services. So tonight, our city's homeless navigator will provide an update to city council regarding the homeless navigation program efforts as well as citywide efforts. And then Kelly Barker will be sharing an update on the Regional Housing Navigation Center. So I will now turn it over to Ms. Radabaugh to begin her presentation. I'm just going to share my screen.
Hello. As Mary Ann mentioned, my name is Rebecca Radabaugh, the homeless navigator for Wheat Ridge and Edgewater. I wanted to come tonight to provide some updates on some of the successes and continued efforts of the homeless navigation program since my last update in August. I'll first be speaking about these topics. The Golden Navigator, the Severe Weather Shelter Network, Housing Connector, Built for Zero, and Client Updates. I'll then move on to speak about the current one home prioritizations followed by the updates from each department and some issues and concerns that we've been seeing in the city. When I started this position in December of 2020, this position was serving the cities of Wheat Ridge, Edgewater, and Golden. In October of 2021, Golden saw the need to hire their own navigator. I was working, I worked with the new Golden Navigator to transfer over the Golden client caseload and help train them on the programs and resources already in place. As of January 2022, this position now only serves the cities of Wheat Ridge and Edgewater. As you recall, I gave an update to council on the Severe Weather Shelter Network in August regarding the established plan for the upcoming winter season. As a refresher, the Severe Weather Shelter Network provides shelter for single men, women, and couples without children living on the streets in life-threatening winter nights. They work alongside community organizations to provide shelter starting October 1st and going through April 30th. This year, Severe Weather Shelter Network continued to provide 40 motel vouchers in the North Region, including Wheat Ridge, Arvada, and Westminster, and 40 vouchers in the Central Regions, including Golden, Lakewood, and Edgewater. In order for an individual to be eligible for a chance to get a voucher on voucher day, an individual must already be registered before the voucher day when severe weather is activated. To help reduce those barriers for individuals to get to registration sites, the City of Wheat Ridge Homeless Navigation Program partnered with the Severe Weather Shelter Network to host three registration events at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center during the months of September, October, and November. Due to the state of the current pandemic in December 2021 and the rise of the Omnicom variant, Severe Weather Shelter Network decided to move to a virtual model and close registration for the remainder of the season. Meaning that instead of having individuals line up at certain locations, they needed to call in at 9:30 a.m. on days when severe weather is activated for a chance to get a voucher. It's still a first come, first served basis when it comes to the vouchers though. Severe Weather Shelter Network has since reopened registrations, registration for the clients of the Jefferson County Navigators, meaning that any clients that are working with me or another navigator can still register for their network. In the event of an emergency where an individual is not sheltered with the Severe Weather Shelter Network when severe weather is activated, or when the network has already run out of vouchers for the event, Jefferson County and the police department and each municipality have coordinated a plan of when it's appropriate to provide a motel voucher for an individual. And the Wheat Ridge Police Department has done an excellent job at following this protocol and communicating with the homeless navigator to ensure those individuals are followed up with services. I wanted to provide an update on Housing Connector. Housing Connector is a nonprofit partnering with properties and case managers to reduce barriers and increase access to housing for individuals experiencing homelessness. Housing Connector and their community partners would work with property partners, meaning landlords and property owners, to make properties available that reduce barriers. In October of 2021, council voted to approve the MOU and data sharing agreement with Housing Connector. Housing Connector had anticipated launching in the Denver area in November 2021. That date was pushed back to January 2022. Since Housing Connector has launched, I've been able to utilize this tool to assist a client with applying to a property. Housing Connector is currently displaying five to six units that are shared among the community partners across the Denver area. They're anticipating adding more properties on their platform in the coming months and years. To give a little background on the Built for Zero movement, this movement is made up of more than 80 cities and counties that have committed to measurably ending homelessness, one population at a time. The goal is to achieve a milestone known as Functional Zero, an ongoing state where homelessness is continuously rare and brief. Built for Zero is an effort by the entire Denver area broken up by counties, broken up by counties. The veteran population is often the first population that this movement focuses on. Jefferson County held their first case conferencing this month and identified 18 veterans. That number is anticipated to grow as more community partners join the case conferencing meetings. During the case conferencing meeting, each veteran is discussed and the following questions are asked. What service provider are they working with? What are their housing, where are they in their housing process and what are the next steps? As a group, we answer these questions and collaborate on the best next steps that may be the best next steps for this individual. This is a great movement that has proven to work and house subpopulations like veterans very quickly. I now wanted to move on and provide some client updates. To date, this program has completed an intake with 111 clients. Five in Edgewater, 17 in Golden, and 89 in Wheat Ridge. And those 17 individuals were transferred on to the new, the Gold Navigator's caseload when they were onboarded in October of 2021. Of that number, 63 of the intakes have been completed since August when I last gave my update to council. 15 of those clients from the total number have secured permanent housing and eight have exited to transitional housing. The homeless navigator continues to have a caseload of 63 clients. And of those clients, eight are currently accessing Emergency Rental Assistance Program funds, also known as ERAP, to stay in motels while they secure permanent housing. These ERAP funds are distributed through the county. An additional 10 clients of that number have either, either have a housing voucher or are searching for housing or securing the documents to apply for a voucher that they've been matched with. Oftentimes, this program works with some of the most vulnerable individuals in our community, meaning, meaning that they don't have any friends or family to lean on for support. Most of the clients have multiple disabilities and barriers that make it very difficult for them to get their daily basic needs met, meaning to get food or water or shelter, or even make it very difficult to attend a meeting with the homeless navigator where they know they might get some of those needs met. I wanted to share some stories about how the homeless navigation program has assisted some of the individuals in our community. The program is currently working with one individual who's been in and out of jail for the past year for charges related to homelessness. That means they could have been charged with camping, trespassing, being in a park after hours or related infractions. It can be, often be hard for this client to find a safe place to stay at night, which sometimes results in them being in a place they've previously been asked to leave just because they know it's a safe place and they, they were safe staying there before. Due to some of the specific client's barriers, they were, they often lose track of time, not even knowing the correct date, thus resulting in them missing multiple court dates and appointments which drew out their legal case. This program was able to work with the municipal court to meet with the client, complete an intake, put their name on the housing list. The client has since been approved for a housing voucher through a community partner and is in their housing search process. This individual is currently incarcerated, but since they were already matched with the housing voucher, it's likely that they won't be exiting onto the street, meaning that they won't be put in the same position to continue getting charges and draw out their legal case. Well, this story seems to be a more successful story. There's also clients that don't have as much successful, success, or that aren't, don't seem as successful to end in permanent housing. In November, the program started working with a very vulnerable client who had several disabilities and one of them being wheelchair bound. Because of this client's disabilities, a congregate shelter setting was not a good fit for them. The homeless navigation program assisted the client with replacing their direct express card, which they use for their social security income and their food stamps cards multiple times. It seems that as soon as the client would get one of these cards, it would get stolen while they were sleeping at night. Due to not being able to stand, the client was not physically able to put on, put up an appropriate shelter to protect themselves from the winter elements or from theft. The program successfully went through the alternative process for one home to advocate for the client to receive one of the next available housing vouchers. And as a reminder, One Home or Coordinated Entry is a collaboration between many agencies to create coordinated housing solutions for persons experiencing homelessness. In the Denver metro area, this is managed by Metro Denver Homeless Initiative or MDHI. And it's kind of where all of our, a lot of the permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing vouchers come from. Once being matched with a voucher, this client was identified as a good candidate for the Bridge Housing Program. The homeless navigation program paid for the individual to be in a hotel where they could stabilize while the paperwork for their housing voucher was completed and they had a unit to move into. During this time, the client experienced discrimination, discrimination from a hotel regarding an ADA room. Since the client was working with the homeless navigation program, the program was able to consult the city attorney on how to share information to ensure the client was not being discriminated against. Unfortunately, before this client was able to move into housing, they passed away. However, the homeless navigation program was able to provide shelter and some stabilization for the client for the last few months of their life instead of them spending that time outdoors exposed to the winter elements. While the client did not end up in permanent housing, I feel this story shows the small successes and the impact that the program has working with our unhoused members of our community. Before I move on to the department updates, I wanted to show the current one home prioritizations. Those are being three or more disabling conditions. So that could be a traumatic brain injury, TBI, developmental disability, mental health, substance use disorder, chronic health condition, physical disability. And so all of those three disabilities and systems involvement and currently fleeing DV and their length of time homeless. So as you can see, the one home is prioritizing individuals who have three or more disabling conditions. This population has been identified as the most vulnerable in our community right now. The last demographics report that was included in the staff report noted that 80.3% of the individuals who have completed an intake have some sort of disability. That means that for those individuals who may only have one disability, for example, a physical disability that prevents them from being able to work are likely not going to be prioritized in our system for housing. Therefore, their pathway towards housing can be a longer timeframe or have less options of what housing could look like. And I wanted to share this slide just to give you a better context of the limited housing options as well as the timeframe that it could take for a client to secure permanent housing. I'll now move on to the department updates. Once a month, we hold a meeting with each depart, that each department attends to discuss how homelessness is impacting their department. And we can collaborate on any action items or how to support each other. I'll be giving a quick, quick update on the continued efforts from each department, but we do have staff members here to answer any further questions for those departments. The municipal court continues to hold homeless court the second Thursday of each month. The court staff have encouraged individuals to attend court by installing a storage locker behind the building for individuals to leave their belongings in while attending court. They additionally, staff provides snack bags and bus tickets to individuals after they see the judge. In 2021, the Parks Department hired three part-time environmental service technicians, or the ESTs, the Parks Forestry and for Parks Forestry and Open Space. The ESTs have been working very closely with community service officers to clean up encampments, abandoned trash throughout the Greenville and around the city. Additionally, the EST service open space technicians working on restoration efforts where illegal camping and other activities have left environmental impacts. The police department has stocked their patrol cars with some emergency winter items for circumstances in which they come across an unhoused person in a severe weather event and there is no shelter available. The community service officer's team is continuing to watch Hopper Hollow Park and the I-70 Kipling area for, and have seen noticeable improvement due to the extra patrol. And C-DOT continues to conduct cleanups one to two times a month when weather is permitting, permitting. Public Works continues to remove debris from the streets in right of way and haul the debris to the landfill. They are consistently sweeping the Kipling and I-70 area when the weather permits. The Let's Talk Resident Engagement Program's current neighborhood blitz is taking place in Anderson Park and Fruitdale neighborhoods. These two neighborhoods seen, have seen some of the highest concentration of issues around homelessness with the I-70 and Kipling intersection and Fruitdale Park. So it's not surprising that homelessness is the number one issue in both of these neighborhoods in contrast to the other neighborhoods. The resident, resident comments in Anderson Park and Fruitdale around this topic and around this topic are wide ranging from safety concerns to wanting more support for those experiencing homelessness. And Let's Talk will be coming back to council in April to provide more information on this. Finally, I wanted to speak about some issues and concerns that staff have been seeing around the city. The first being the issue around sharps like used syringes being found at our parks. Our park staff is having to handle and dispose of needles found in the parks on a daily basis, which is a concern for staff and also for our park, park patrons. Staff is into, staff is looking into what it's going to look like to provide sharps containers in these areas. The second issue is human waste. Staff often find, often finds human waste in the parks and is tasked with properly cleaning it up. My clients have even told me that they sometimes use the restroom in the bushes, not because they want to, but because they don't know where they can access a restroom at nighttime. The Parks Department has placed two portable toilets in Fruitdale Park. However, on two separate occasions, the porter, the portable toilets were caught on fire. Staff is unsure how to proceed on this matter of providing more porter toilets or continuing to be tasked with cleaning up human waste. We're bringing these topics to an open conversation with city council about the realities of what our staff see every day and also to let council know that we may need additional support in these areas. We're working hard to find good solutions, but it's hard to find one that meets everyone's needs. Thank you. And I'll now turn it over to Kelly Barker.
Hey, thanks Rebecca. I'm just going to share my screen.
Like Rebecca will need to stop sharing hers. There you go. Looks like we have it.
There we go. So good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me back again. My name's Kelly Barker. I'm the Jeffco Regional Homelessness Coordinator. I work for Jefferson County Human Services. As Rebecca mentioned, I'm just going to give a, I'm just going to kind of zoom out a little bit and talk about countywide initiatives, namely the Housing Navigation Center, which is in development. We'll talk about the updates and status of that. And then just some really high level, wanted to touch on a few highlights and good things happening with the heading homework groups. Yeah. So this is kind of where we are with the Housing Navigation Center. And I'm sorry, I'm trying to get oriented on my slide here. So, so I think I presented last, it was May of 2021. And I did present this very high level concept for Housing Navigation Centers in Jefferson County that. Had originated, it would been created out of our heading home work group. That really addressed our sheltering gaps analysis that we created. And so this was kind of the original design concept. It's at the top here. And basically, the idea is to have two housing navigation center campuses, one in North Jeffco, one in Sunfish Jeffco. Each of the campuses had would have three primary components. One would be permanent housing. One would be a navigation center, which is sort of like a resource drop-in center. It's just open during the day. And then the last would be emergency beds. And so the concept has evolved a little bit since then, but primarily it's roughly the same. We, at that time, we didn't have any sites identified. And so we wanted to be, you know, flexible knowing the sites might limit us or allow us to expand or whatnot. So where we are now is we now have kind of solidified this idea of having a northern campus and central campus. We have sites identified in the northern campus area. One, two locations in the northern campus that are very close to each other on Marshall Street. One location is owned by Family Tree and it is large enough to have seventy five supportive housing units. Well, they're in the process of confirming that, but we anticipate that being about how much housing can fit on that parcel. And then the other site would be is still is not yet under site control. And we're still negotiating and offers been extended by the city of. Arvada to purchase that hasn't yet been accepted. There's some issues they're working through. But that site is a bit larger and would be able to accommodate that full model that we originally conceived, which is the seventy five supportive housing workforce. Permanent housing units, the fifty emergency beds in the navigation center. We really like this model because it it represents that full continuum of services. So anybody at any stage in their housing crisis can access services there. So can accommodate everybody from, I've never been homeless before, I've just been evicted. I have nowhere to go. I need some emergency assistance can come to the drop-in center and kind of get those services. All the way to someone who's been chronically homeless for ten plus years, has severe health issues, things like that. We'll have, we'll be able to accommodate kind of a wide range of folks at this, at this. At this sites, but without being too large to handle. And so, and then the central campus site has pending site identification. That is not, so again, site has not been located yet. In this area, so it's likely that the primary funding source for these will be low income housing tax credits. And so that tax credit application is due in August. I'll show on the next slide a timeline. But it's likely that the central campus will need to go in another year because they would need to go through the whole zoning process and all of that. So that's still that this kind of overview of the of the concept. This is kind of a just overview of what we're looking for when we look for a location. This is a rendering of the project that our developer. Is currently in development in Missoula, Montana, and it's the most closely aligned with. It's really what our our concept is modeling most closely after it has a navigation center, shelter beds, permanent housing as well. And, and so we have the developer who is working on this and has a couple of other projects very, very similar to what we want to do. Here in Jefferson County. So we're really excited to have them on board. So this is what our. Housing Navigation Center partnership looks like as of today. Blue Line Development, as I mentioned a year ago, when we, I talked to you last and giving you an update. Again, this was really born out of the heading home group. And then we, the first partner, we got Bo Simone Consulting on board. They're a. Contracted with the State Division of Housing to do consulting on projects just like this. They lead the permanent supportive housing toolkit statewide, so they have a lot of expertise and credibility throughout the state. And so we, this housing navigation collaborative collaboration group met with Bo Simone up until November. When we procured Blue Line Development. So Blue Line Development is now in the driver's seat of this project. And we meet this collaboration, which consists of staff from every city and county and the county. Have been meeting weekly since, I think, early summer to really bring this concept into fruition. And so we now have Blue Line, Bo Simone, and the collaboration that meets weekly. Family Tree is on there now because they are, again, I mentioned earlier, they own one of the sites. That will be used to develop supportive housing. And so they are now have been folded into the project. And then Shopworks Architecture is a phenomenal architecture firm. That does, has done a lot of these projects, really. A national leader in kind of trauma informed design, really have some beautiful projects. They designed a Royo Village, if you're familiar. Which was a similar project in Denver and just some really beautiful work. In northern campus development timelines, so this just shows the timeline. Again, this is starting from April. Couldn't fit the full timeline back when we first started, but site identification, we really hope to kind of lock that down. Very soon and then get site control by July so that we can get our tax credit application in August. Again, we'll find out whether we'll receive, whether we will be awarded the tax credits in October. And then if so, construction would start by in a year from then and then with an anticipated opening in early two thousand and twenty five. If we are not awarded tax credits, we have to go in for the next year's round, which would be August two thousand and twenty three. The central campus. Component then would. Would come in the next year. So August, if we submit this year and we get funded. And then we would have another application in August two thousand and twenty three with the the central campus. We don't get funded this year, we would fold the central campus and northern campus tax credit application in together August two thousand and twenty three. So county and city anticipated contributions, I think I mentioned, you know, we're this at the last meeting, we didn't have, we had kind of an estimate. Of how much we anticipated the center's costing a year ago. We're starting to really drill down on these numbers. We are anticipating that we will use city and county ARPA. One-time funds in the amount of six million dollars for pre-construction construction of all the buildings in the northern campus. And then the ongoing operations costs would amount to about one point eight million for both the nav center and emergency beds. Again, we are in the process of procuring our service providers. Who will really lead the project. And so, and the developer again is leading this, this kind of procurement process. So once we get that service provider on board, we're really going to be able, they will be the experts in how much sheltering operations and all of that costs. Right now, we just kind of got an estimates from various other shelters and nav centers. So we'll, we'll refine these numbers much more so in the coming weeks. And some other things we're really working on right now is we're working on beginning an IGA that we will execute between us and counties. Of like how we'll split that was funding amounts proportionally, both operations and the development costs. And we are also working on, again, I mentioned the the service provider procurement process and all of that entailed with that. We're also working on a communications plan, getting that set up, working with the PIOs. Information officers in each cities, in each city and developing a more detailed timeline. We're working on a business plan. So we just. A lot, a lot of balls in the air with, with the navigation centers and it's, it's all really exciting. But I think things will start to become much more clear in the next truly two to three months when we start to get close to that tax credit application. So switching gears a bit, just wanted to mention a few things going on with the heading home action plan and the gaps analysis. I brought, I presented at the the last city council meeting in Gamas May. Through this sheltering gaps analysis that Heading Home had conducted. We really identified, looked at the data that is available on homelessness in Jefferson County. And looked at what resources we have, what programs are in place, who they're serving, what their barriers are and whatnot. We really looked at where are the gaps, who's not being served and who's not being served well. And so from that, we identified these four populations. That really have a high amount of unmet need and they, they do are listed in order of highest unmet need. So the highest, of course, is adult only household. So single adults or adult couples or whatnot. There are no permanent year-round shelters for adults in Jefferson County. You know, we have wind domestic violence shelters, so it does serve adults, but you know, single men, any kind of men, we really focus go to Denver during severe weather, severe weather shelter network. Sort of some of them, but really just a portion of them. They, they don't have enough resources to meet the full need. So this is just really rose to the top and that's what the housing navigation centers is really meant to support and provide resources for. So again, that's in progress. And then these three other populations, adults with medically fragile conditions is something that really surfaced from the navigation program. And that the navigators have expressed just seeing a real increased need to serve this population that people are finding. Living outside are just have some really horrendous medical conditions. People that have had amputations, the next day they're out on the street, people with severe wounds. You know, need, need to be out of the street to have regular daily and sometimes hourly wound care that they're not getting when they're on the street. So just lots of pretty horrendous conditions. And so in the past year, a new program, program organization was formed in there actually in Lakewood, they serve the whole county, they serve Wheat Ridge residents, of course. And it's called Recovery Works and it's based out of the old family shelter at seven eleven West Colfax. A small, small building, but they're serving a really important need. They have ten beds on the second floor and they have a drop-in center. On the ground floor and they are working with Stride and then Luther Medical as well to. To, to serve this population. And then families with children, there were, well, there are more resources in Jefferson County dedicated to homeless families with children. We know that there was a need for more kind of congregate, non-congregate shelter, but in a kind of congregate setting. So we actually worked with the White Swan Motel, renovated their motel to safe and habitable standards. We, the county executed a master lease with them in January, January seventh was the start date. And it's been going really well. Served, I think, sixty two people, thirty four children, twenty eight households. And the average length of stay is around thirty days. And so, so that's, yeah, that's a pilot, it's a year pilot. That it continues and we can find funding to to continue that pilot. And it's been, we were learning quite a bit, so it's been a great experience so far. And then last population is we have significant number of people in Jefferson County living in their vehicles. RVs, cars, whatnot. I just, I live very close to Panama Park in Wheat Ridge and just this morning walked through the park. And there was quite a large van that was very clearly, obviously, folks were living in there. And just a ton of stuff on, you know, the top and the side and inside whatnot. So we, we see this all over in parks. Parks throughout Jefferson County. And so to save park, one nonprofit has set up, I think it's been about two years, but they've set up. Colorado State Parking Initiative has set up two safe parking lots in Jefferson County. In the last year, year and a half, one in Golden, one in Arvada. And they are really trying to set up more parking lots, just allows people a safe place to park and access services. So they can move on and get back into stable housing. It's really difficult to do unless they have a safe place they can, they can park at night. And lastly, just wanted to mention a few activities. I won't go into detail. These are listed here, but just the heading home. Has four, four work groups that are listed here, aligned with our action plan. Couple of great successes that we're really excited about in the last year, really a couple of months. The Jefferson Center Mental Health was funded for a street outreach team. And that was a concept and proposal that Heading Home pitched to them. They applied for funding and were awarded funding. So this is really the first countywide street outreach team that Jefferson County has ever had. They can partner and will partner with the homeless navigators to make their reach go further, make the services more robust that they can offer. So we're really, really excited about that. We have a community engagement group that's doing a lot of work around. You know, putting good information, accurate information out there on homelessness. And then supportive housing work group, just wanted to mention that is actually transitioning into a housing continuum task force. Which the county is approved for ARPA funds to hire a consultant to lead that. And it'll be modeled largely after the state transformational task force on affordable housing. That was just concluded and the idea is to really create a really robust action plan. Around a full continuum of housing. So everything from supportive housing all the way to homeownership. And really look at where the gaps, where are the low hanging threes? Where can we make the biggest impact in, in creating a truly an action plan? And then last, I just wanted to mention the data collection and reporting. Rebecca mentioned the Built for Zero initiative. And I won't go into too much detail. She mentioned it, it's really around reducing veterans homelessness. And we just started case conferencing and we had nineteen folks on our first finding list. We've already gotten two folks housed. That number, that nineteen will probably go up as we get, you know, work with more organizations. To make sure they're connecting their homeless veterans with us so we can get them on the list. But we have to get started somewhere and we're really excited just to get going and be part of this regional, this regional built for zero effort. And then just shout out to Rebecca and also all of the homeless navigators did a fantastic job with our. Our pick count, which is point in time homeless count, which isn't like an annual census of folks experiencing homelessness that's done at the end of January every year. And we just keep our fingers crossed that the weather will be good. This year it did not work out for us. The weather was really bad. It was one of the days with a really bad snowstorm on that January twenty fourth or twenty fifth. And so it was, you know, Rebecca was out there all day counting folks and our, we had some really hardy volunteers that showed up. Despite the weather and we will get those results back probably in June. So we'll certainly post those on the heading home website and among the cities and counties. That's all I have and I'm happy to take any questions you have. Again, here's my contact information.
Well, thank you very much, Kelly and Rebecca, for those updates. Very informative. Looks like we've got some. Great progress being made with, with helping people experiencing homelessness and, and with some of the effects that. That homelessness has upon our communities. So we'll open it up for, for questions from council. Councilor Hobby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rebecca, you had said that there is a process input, so. A- as I understand it, for someone to be able to have vouchers, they have to pre-register is, is the process. But there's also a process in place if, if someone hasn't pre-registered. And so it's a two-part question. What is that process if somebody hasn't pre-registered? And it ends up being zero degrees and, and they're on the street. And then also, is there any sort of like business card size, something that has your information on it? That as counselors, we could carry around with us because oftentimes I encounter people experiencing homelessness. Like severely unhoused though, like on the street, no, you know, no car or anything or no couch to surf. And, and what I tell them to do is to call the police department if they get a chance or to flag down an officer if they see one. And that the officers can help them. But if I could give them an information card so that they would have that information. That would be helpful. So what is the process for if they're not pre-registered? And do you have any outreach materials that we could be carrying with us?
That's a great question. If they're not pre-registered and it becomes the day of and there's time. We refer folks to the shelters in Denver because they have overflow shelters that open up. And I'm happy to provide bus tickets for those individuals to get to Denver. If it's the middle of the night and the officer finds someone and they don't have winter clothing, like they have a very light jacket on. If it's the middle of the night and the officer finds someone and they don't have winter clothing, like they have a very light jacket on. And it's a blizzard like we had last week, we have something in place and they would put someone, if it's appropriate, decide if it's appropriate. Either transfer them to a shelter if anything is open, or they would voucher them in a motel and then I would get connected. And make sure we follow up in there in the motel for the whole severe weather event. And then work with them to figure out plans. A lot of it is routing people to Denver if the option is available. If it's early enough in the day and they can make it to the shelters. I do have some outreach items. We can look into that more. I I have a limited supply of items. A lot of my items are donations from members of the community or organizations in the community. But I can work on getting a small little card for resources or my business card or something like that that could be passed out.
Thank you, and I'd be happy to use my council outreach funds to help get those printed. And then my other question is, you had told a story about someone who was in and out of court with different charges around. Trespassing or panhandling. And so I know that we have a homeless court and I know that the the purpose of that is to not put them. In jail for those charges. And so my question is, were those charges before we started our homeless court? Were they in another municipality that doesn't have sort of the same philosophy as we have around not penalizing people for being homeless? Like, I just want to understand if that was our community, if there's something else we need to do policy wise to make sure we're not penalizing people to be homeless? Or if that was just prior to what we had decided or in another community?
That's a great question. And with this particular individual, I think I mentioned they have a hard time. Keeping track of time and making it to court and appointment. So they are part of our homelessness court. But they really struggled to meet the court criteria of meeting with me or with the probation officer or even coming to court. And that's why it kind of drag along, drag along, along so long with their court cases. And so normally the court works with individuals to try not to have those charges, but they have to show up and do their part as well. And so for some individuals, it's a lot harder to remember dates and times and get to court. And so that was a, an interesting case and I don't want to go too much into detail with this individual, but so they were doing it, they just weren't fully showing up on their part.
And then the last thing I wanted to say is I, I'm. I'm so very sorry for the loss of your client. I used to work with outreach, outreach with homeless youth. And I had a similar situation where I ended up losing a youth and so I'm I'm very sorry. And I appreciate all the hard work that you do out in the streets and and Kelly, I appreciate all the hard work you're doing with. Getting all these folks and all of our resources organized so that we can really have an effective plan. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional questions? Or comments? Counselor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions. One is, can you share any details of the. That staff was showing at that, the forty four sub area plan about homeless. I don't know what those, if there's something that they had coordinated with you.
I I think, Mr. Ohm, you are you speaking about the comments that we received from. From the Let's Talk Program in the Fruitdale.
Yeah.
Neighborhood.
Well, yeah, it wasn't just, it wasn't just the fruit day, it was also for like Anderson Park.
Yeah. Well, I I think I can speak to that a little bit and I don't have the report in front of me, but. We did, you know, we we were in the middle of the outreach for the Fruitdale. Let's Talk Program and also Anderson Park. And those two neighborhoods, we've received probably the most comments about. At least the perception of public safety and and crime and homelessness issues, which isn't surprising. Being close to the I seventy Kipling and the motels and Fruitdale Park. And we did have a internal meeting with the police department to discuss this a week or two ago. To start looking at strategies and and how we can focus on those neighborhoods more. And I did have a couple of representatives from the police department attend the the meeting last week at the rec center. So that residents could speak one-on-one with with the police department to talk about their concerns and their issues. And hear from the police department directly on what we're doing. But I'm not sure if that that responds to your question, Mr. Ohm, but that's what I know about what we've been hearing in those neighborhoods.
Okay, yeah, it didn't really answer right enough. If maybe Rebecca had had some conversation with staff that they're working on some, some details, but I can, I can wait for that in the future. The other thing was on the, Rebecca had brought up the porta potties that were getting burnt. I'm I'm not sure what that solution is other than. To, you know, location of it. I know that the permanent structures can become problematic with the winterization. And they're usually locked during the winter and sometimes those can feel unsafe and that there's a maintenance issue with those. I still support the the porta potties. I think the maintenance can be done, but you know, I don't know what we can do as far as location. So there's more eyes on it, kind of a passive surveillance.
And we are, Mr. Ohm, also looking into maybe some more. Intensive solutions and 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 resources beyond just porta potties. And I I think Kelly mentioned it, they're looking at some trailers with showers and laundry facilities. And Zach Lovata, who's our parks, Parks and Rec manager, our parks manager, he's on the on the line tonight. But we did some research on what those facilities cost and and quite a bit of expense. I think we're looking at that thirty thousand a month in the winter. To have a fully outfitted trailer that is obviously hooked to to power and water and and is staffed. So that, you know, they're not vandalized. Pre-COVID, there was more volunteer groups that provided a trailer in Jefferson County. And COVID hit and they stopped providing that because they were manned or staffed by volunteers. And I don't think they could find volunteers anymore, so. You know, I know that's Rebecca mentioned that in her her report that. Providing facilities for laundry and showers, I think is is a big need. We do provide shower cards for the recreation center. I think Rebecca does give out shower cards for folks who request it. But there are some. There are some other solutions out there. I don't know if Kelly can talk more about the trailer and if that is something that. We might find soon or or if it's a funding issue or if that's gonna come to fruition or not.
Yeah, we actually, we found an organization in Denver that's gonna. They're saying they're gonna do it for free in Jefferson County, so I can bring Rebecca onto that phone call I've been a call with them this week. We were partnering with a church in Lakewood to park there, I think once a week and then I think maybe, I mean. We could probably do more, so we can talk about it. It it sounds too good to be true, but that's that's what they're saying. It's a church-based service.
Would there ever be a, one last question? When I fought forest fires a long, long time ago, I did get to use the portable showers and the portable laundry. Provided by the feds, is there, would there ever be remotely any discussion? Because right now. Other than the Marshall Fire, this is not the fire season. And so those types of trailers are probably just sitting around, although I know that the climate is constantly changing.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Zach, what, where Zach did his research. That that's something we could look into, see if there's maybe some some state or other governmental agencies that that have some resources. It's it the big, you know, we would definitely recommend that they be staffed at some level. Just because there there is so much vandalism of these units and so that, I think that a lot of that's. That thirty thousand a month is is that cost, I think, of staffing. But we'll we'll work with Kelly on on this this trailer that she's talking about and seeing if that will provide some of her needs. But we do need to continue providing some, looks like Zach unmuted himself. So Zach, do you have something to say?
Yeah, Patrick. I found the vendor that provides a service for the city of Denver. They have a mobile restroom facility on Sixteenth Street Mall. And I think we would mirror, we probably use that vendor as the the first one that I found that was willing to to provide the service. It needs to be attended twenty-four hours a day. The difference is Sixteenth Street Mall is is pretty heavily populated. And there's, there's a big police presence all day and night there. They're constantly patrolling up and down the mall. You know, if we were to put one of those restrooms somewhere in Wheat Ridge, it's, it's gonna be, you know. It's gonna be in the, and it it won't be highly visible, probably. It'll probably be somewhere where. There's not as much public presence. The the police department certainly doesn't have the resources to to have somebody staffed or or stand by all day and night there, so. There are some hesitations that I think we have as as staff members. But I think, I think the the solution is is not clear for anybody and it's extremely difficult. To to come up with what the right answer is. We certainly would love to have facilities for our people experiencing homelessness. Because if they're not able to go into a store and they're not able to use our our permanent facilities that we have in the parks. Then they'll be outdoors and Rebecca explained earlier that we have a staff. Of environmental service technicians that are tasked with cleaning up. And and a lot of their most hazardous cleanups have to do with human waste. And so if I. We'll keep working as a team to see if we can come up with a solution. It's good to hear from folks like those at Jefferson County, other cities. Other neighboring cities to see what they might be doing and what works. We know that the the porta potties in certain areas have been vandalized and and it. It's getting to the point now where it's like these poor folks, you know, don't have an option for a restroom. I mean, it's much, I think it's a little bit more than just using the the bathroom. It's it's having a place to wash up, wash your hands. More than that, probably shower, laundry, so. You know, I think it it could be a combination of things, but our team with the staff is, we're constantly thinking about it and trying to work on it.
Thank you. I have Counselor Nosler back and then I'll come back to Ms. Hoppy.
Thanks, Kelly. Thanks, Rebecca. I had a question about the Sharps containers and. I know Rebecca, you joined us for a conversation at Mountain Phoenix back in October. But the Sharps containers, I think, are not just something that impact, you know, that area and that park. I think they could be really valuable for all of the parks in Wheat Ridge. If we could have some in some of those public spaces, just for, you know, the safety of the people who are using. Using the parks and I'm wondering, you mentioned that they're still having conversations about those. What what what's the holdup on Sharps containers? And is there anything that we can do to kind of help support with that? And are you working with the police department on it? Is my question. Lots of questions, I guess, in that one.
If Zach could take this one, he's got the most knowledge.
Okay, yeah, sure. I will go ahead and take this one and I forgot to apologize last time. My my computer got disconnected, so I'm on my phone. You guys cannot see me. Hopefully you can hear me fine. We've been, I think the the history of the the needle, the Sharps collections. It has kind of gotten to the, led us to the point now where we're comfortable installing these kiosks. I did come up with a prioritized list of locations that we'd like to start. Through this process, I did see that the city of Lakewood has some kiosks that I thought were really nice. I think part of it had to do with what's the best design? Do we, you know, hang them on a wall? Do we hide them behind a sign? Are they highly visible? You know, what is the public gonna think? And and I did visit a couple of parks in Lakewood where they had some that I thought were, that looked really well. They weren't like screaming, you know, come and, you know, play with me, you know, near a near a playground or anything. But they were in a logical place. And what what I found out was that they had partnered with Jefferson County Public Health in installing those units. There's some good information on those kiosks that people can use to. To get resources they might need, whether it be help or medical assistance or clean needles or whatever it might be. But there's, there's, it's much more than just a place to drop your needle. It's 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 more of a, an informational kiosk. And so I really liked that. I reached out to Jefferson County Public Health and with the with the help of Rebecca. And we've been working on getting this, it's 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 a lot closer now. Fruitdale is our number one place right now and like I said, a priority list of a few places. I do agree that all parks eventually should have them. We'll target the the biggest areas first. And the right now they're looking into if they have AARP funds. It to see if they can assist with installing some of these. I'm already, I think Karen and I are at the point where we're comfortable searching our our current operational budgets. To at least get the ones that are needed out there soon. So if there's no funds available from Jeffco Public Health, we'll certainly move forward. And we can still partner with them and providing the information on those kiosks that I that I think is very valuable. The other thing to consider is from a budgetary standpoint, we would need to have somebody collect those things when they get full. I'm not sure what that costs. I'm waiting for some response on that, but to answer your question. You know, the the holdup has been a little bit long. I think. We're a matter of weeks away from getting our first one set out and then we'll go from there. I do want to say that I had some kind of mixed comments. I was at the open house where the Let's Talk Engagement. Open House the other day and and I think there there probably is some. Some sort of public outreach that is needed to explain. I think there's a lot of folks that. And we have the same fear too, kind of going into it. If we put a kiosk out there, is it gonna draw people to the spot? To then use more in that particular spot? And what we found is that they're using anyway and they're using them places that that exposes my staff and the public. To dangerous situation, dangerous and hazardous situations, so. So the answer is, is they're they're using the needles, they're leaving them on the ground a lot of times. And it it would be just so much better to have a a safe place to put them. So I think we're at the place now with the staff. We're ready to move forward. I do have a little bit of. Hesitancy or I would like to to talk about maybe some sort of public outreach. So that people understand why and what it is that we're doing and how it's it's going to help.
Thanks. I, so you're you're thinking that we're as close as weeks out for the Fruitdale installation? Is that where you're at on that? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, we've been, just last week I was was having some good conversations with Jeffco. And if they can't provide one, we will certainly buy it, but we'll we'll use their help to.
Great.
To make sure that it gets in the right place.
And then I guess all I was gonna just add is that, you know, the like Mountain Phoenix, some of the schools, some of the. Neighborhoods and the areas around there, I mean, this one way of potentially educating and engaging folks with this is that. Some of these organizations or schools are interested in potentially helping, you know, pay for some of it. So that's just a, an idea to keep out there too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hoppy.
Thanks, Mr. Aaron. And just to kind of tag a little bit on what Councilwoman Nasla Beck was saying, that that entire school community. They're actually asking, they're asking for for safe needle disposal in that park. And so, you know, they would be good storytellers and and good, you know, marketing. You know, like this is why we as a school community thinks this, think this is important. But what I really rose my hand for was because a little known fact about me. I worked at the Taste of Colorado, slinging slow roasted corn for ten years. So there were customer, you know, there were participant, um, bathrooms and then there were vendor bathrooms. And what we did every year is we would take a lock that had like the four-digit dial on the bottom and put it on the vendor bathroom and then just kind of pass the word around with the vendors. Like this is the code to get into the bathroom. So I don't know if that is maybe a, a, a simple or easy way to try to address the, the bathrooms. Because I do know that this community tend to self-police quite a bit. And so if they're concerned that someone is going to ruin their opportunities to have that facility, then, um, then they'll kind of self-police that. And then potentially, because there's, there's really no, we don't know who's starting them on fire. We don't, we can't assume that it's someone who is a part of the homeless community that's utilizing it. And so that might be maybe a, uh, a really easy way to kind of just see if we can keep those out there and, and keep our staff park safe and, uh, keep our homeless community, um, have their facilities still available to them.
Thank you, um, Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, a couple of things first. I just really want to thank you both Kelly and Rebecca for all your work in our community. You know, when, when I came across that of the sixty-three intakes since August of twenty twenty-one, that fifteen of those, uh, have secured permanent housing and eight have exited to transitional housing. I mean, that's phenomenal. That's over a third. And, um, that kind of work really makes an impact, you know, on those individual lives in our communities. I just want to thank you for that work. And also just being out there and being in touch with the people in Wheat Ridge who are experiencing homelessness. I mean, there's, you know, there's just not a lot of dignity. And, and so just having someone who is in touch with them and, and keeping track of them and checking in with them and helping connect them with resources is just incredibly valuable. So I'm just grateful for your work and I'm glad we're doing that as a city. Um, I, I think Kelly, you're, when you were talking about the Jefferson County and looking at a couple of different locations for, um, these consolidated services. And one of the things was, it was a qualifying tract was one of the criteria. Can you just, um, share a little bit more, like, what is a qualifying tract as a criteria for that type of, um, facility?
Yeah, that's a good question. Qualified census tract. Um, so for the low-income housing tax credit program that's operated through CHAFA, Colorado Housing Finance Authority, um, which is a federal, um, federal program, uh, the, if you build or develop in, within a qualified census tract, which I believe is designated by HUD and you can, um, Google, actually, I can put the link in the chat, find, search, um, for, to identify where the, the maps are, or where the tracks are on a map. There are actually no tracks, qualified census tracks in the city of Wheat Ridge. But the advantage is that if you develop in a qualified census tract, you get, I believe it's like a thirty or so percent tax credit boost. So in other words, it would cost us several million dollars more to develop in an area that is not even a qualified census tract. So that's really been where we've been looking in qualified census tract areas.
Great. Thank you. And then another, you know, to Ms. Hoppy's point around like different sort of ways of helping connect, um, people experiencing homelessness with restrooms and facilities. Um, a couple of interactions I've had recently with people that I've come across in District Two that I've, you know, I, I carry bus passes with me also and, you know, try and let them know where the, you know, there's a, uh, pantry in my neighborhood that's usually stocked. And, um, you know, one of the things that like has, that I, I've noticed the last couple of times is that one of the things they're really trying to do is actually access a phone because they are trying to reach people that might be able to help them with. You know, they're either trying to take care of some administrative thing, like we were hearing about, you know, difficulties reaching court. How, are, are there things that are being considered? Or are there things that we could be looking at to help provide them access to basic communications? I know they can go to the library and get on the computer if they've got an ID. But a lot of times they, they, they need to make phone calls. Is that something that we're able to help them with?
To an extent, yes. Um, so the library, some of our, um, rec centers have a free phone and libraries have a free phone that individuals can use. There's also some sites like the site that Kelly mentioned Recovery Works and the Rising Church in Nevada, um, that allow people to use their phone. And additionally, if people qualify for food stamps, there are some resources where they can order a free phone. It just takes sometimes four to six weeks from when they order it for, to get to them.
Yeah, well, as, as we're looking at this, I think if we could be considering how we can increase their access to, to phones, I know that helps on all fronts if they've, if they've got people that they can be reaching. So, um, but, you know, overall, it's just, this is, you know, a great update to see the impact you're making. It's, it's never enough, but, uh, it is something and it's making a difference. So thank you guys both for your work.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and thank you, Kelly and Rebecca for being here and giving us an update. Um, I know that this has been an issue, um, that's been highlighted throughout our community and I just appreciate, um, you giving us this information. Um, and my question really is, are there any opportunities in which we could meet with groups, um, in the community and, and kind of either give them updates or provide them resources, tools or suggestions on, on how to address certain things? I know Patrick, you had mentioned that you've, you've put people in touch with Wheat Ridge PD, but is, are there opportunities or any discussion about having, um, meetings in which we can kind of inform the public and update them as well as, uh, answer questions or, or get them any information, like cards or what have you to help with, with the situation as well?
Well, tonight was, um, kind of our update for the public. But, um, are, are you suggesting like an open house or something to, um?
Yeah, or, or like, how, Councilmember Nosler Beck and I, you know, meeting with, uh, Mountain Phoenix. And I, I know some other schools, um, and neighborhoods around, on, around Clear Creek and, and the Parks of Express having issues. Um, so just kind of touching base with those communities and, and seeing how we can help them. I mean, uh, Val and I both got emails from Mountain Phoenix, um, recently in, in regards to, you know, the Sharps containers as well as, um, training for, for their staff and, and parents as far as like, uh, identifying paraphernalia and how to, how to get rid of it safely and whatnot.
Yeah, the PD is, um, they're going to reach back out to Mountain Phoenix and, um, and see what else we can do for them. And yeah, our PD does, um, on a regular basis, meet with different business groups or neighborhoods. Most recently, um, with, um, Val was work, um, Nosler Beck was working with, uh, the Lake Mount, Lake Mount Center up in, uh, by the, um, commuter rail. And, uh, they, they had some concerns with, with public safety and I think some homelessness issues too. I, I believe that, um, Council, Councilwoman, um, Nosler Beck. And so we'll go out and, and, and listen and provide any resources that those neighborhoods would, might need. If there's a specific neighborhood or school that you are aware of that's asking for this, please contact me and, and we can get the PD out there and, um, have it, and Rebecca and whoever else we need to and, um, and have those meetings. We are reaching back out with Mountain Phoenix. I know that's one definitely on the priority list and making sure they're getting what they need.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Um, uh, Counselor Nosler back.
Um, just, uh, one thing that, um, both Counselor Dozeman and I heard from, um, we had a community meeting, um, two weeks ago and from some of the neighbors, in addition to the, the schools. The, the folks are asking for, um, a lot of, I think the same thing that, um, Counselor Hoppy mentioned at the beginning, which is just, is there something that we can hand people that explains this is the, these are the resources that are available? Um, here's quick contact info. These, these neighbors, um, in District Four were, um, wanting to be able to, you know, have, they, they want to be able to help, um, and be able to be connected to those resources or be able to connect to those resources themselves, like to have a conversation with you, Rebecca, on how to help or whatever. So I guess I'm just saying, um, I really like the idea of what Counselor Hoppy had mentioned with a, with a, a card or something that we can hand out. Um, and we could share those with, with neighbors and with the schools and things as well.
Well, we do have a central resource and, and we could get you a card that has, um, this information on it. But our, um, what's up Wheat Ridge? Um, we have a central location that has, um, tons of resources on what the city's doing and where people can go for other information. Um, a lot of things you heard tonight about the Built for Zero program, Heading Home, the Navigation Program, the Navigation Centers, um, Jeff, Jeff Go Action Plan on homelessness. Um, it's all on our what's up.
Yeah, and I, I totally get that, but this is for interaction with people who are experiencing, you know, homelessness, um, to be able to see that. I, we, we've given that information to everybody to reference, you know, if there's someone who has access to.
Okay, so you're just talking about specifically people who are experiencing homelessness. I don't know, Rebecca, what would you recommend, um, that people could hand out to somebody?
I think Kelly was just about to say something, um.
Yeah, we, we actually do have a little resource card that Heading Home created. Um, it's, it's out of date. It's two years old. So I, I literally just this morning, someone else just asked for this and at the county. And, um, I just put on my to-do list this morning to update that. So I think, um, you know, I need to figure out how we'll distribute it. We'll at least post it, um, so people can print it out on our website. Um, I'll, I'll make sure I let, um, your staff know and you can maybe put a link to it on your what's up Wheat Ridge page. So you can just download and print it and we'll probably print some off. So we haven't worked through the implementation of it, but we already have something. We just need to, need to update it because we actually handed them out at the point in time count two years ago. So, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. We'll make sure we'll get the, we'll follow up on that and get those to council.
Great. Thank you very much. Rebecca and Kelly, thank you very much for joining us tonight and thank you for, uh, the work that you're doing in our community. Uh, Kelly, I had sort of one question with regard to the, to the financing on the Navigation Center up north. And, uh, if I'm kind of looking at the numbers right, do we have sort of ARPA funds and other, other, uh, sort of federal funds mixed with, you know, either state or other funds to do the capital construction on that? And then it looks like we've got sort of a, of a 1.8 million sort of carry down the line. Is that, that, that's, that's sort of the, the funding level that we need to get to?
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, that, that's very preliminary. That might change, but I think it's going to be right around there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Well, it's great that you sort of identified, uh, a site that's got some resources connected with it already. And, and hopefully that'll, that'll come to fruition. So that puts us a long way forward in terms of getting this facility put together. Any, uh, any further discussion that you all want to have while we've got Rebecca and Kelly with us? It's been a great, uh, great evening and a lot of, a lot of good information and, and I think a lot of great work. You know, I look back at what we've done in the last year to, to sort of bring Rebecca online and, and Kelly's program is so much more robust and the Built for Zero, you know, program and, and the MDHI and, and, uh, uh, sort of being able to, to survey and get out into the, into the population. I think understand a lot more of the issues. So thank you all for, for doing that. Okay. Um, so anyway, thank you. Uh, we'll, uh, let me get back to my agenda. I suppose we have a, it will close out this, uh, agenda item and I go to Mr. Goff for staff, s- staff presentation, or not a staff presentation, but a city manager's matters.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Maybe quick, might be quick. I don't know. This probably isn't a quick topic, but, um, we don't have to, um, come to resolution this evening. But I did send, send counsel an email last Thursday about a proposed, uh, collective bargaining bill. And there was a couple of speakers this evening that mentioned it. But there is, there is proposed, um, legislation on collective bargaining at the state. There hasn't been a, a actual bill introduced yet at this point. But, um, Colorado Municipal League, um, is asking, um, us and all cities as members to, um, oppose the bill and to talk to their state representatives, asking them to oppose this bill once it's introduced. Um, and it's not, uh, opposition to collective bargaining. It's, it's just opposition to the state mandate, um, that the state's going to be requiring is, is getting in the middle of local home rule, um, authority and, um, our ability as a city to manage our own personnel matters. Colorado Municipal League is, as you know, is, is, that's a primary, uh, focus of theirs is protecting home rule and local, local patrol. Um, they've also supported or opposed bills in the past that, um, that would restrict collective bargaining too. So again, this is not a collective bargaining issue. This is just that this would be an unfunded mandate, um, put upon our, um, the city. And, um, so they're asking, uh, for us to take a, take a position. City of Arvada has, their mayor has sent a letter, um, to their reps and through CML, um, opposing this bill. I haven't, I'm not sure what other cities have done at this point, but, um, just asking if council has, um, any thoughts on this? If they want to, um, want staff to draft a letter for the mayor to send, um, through CML to our state reps?
Discussion on this item? Patrick, why don't you, uh, why don't you go ahead and MC this one? And, uh, Nosler, Nosler Beck has her hand up. Okay.
Um, are you ready for me to talk, Patrick?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Sorry, I didn't know how official this is. I, I would just, um, I would just like to suggest, since this is, uh, you know, ask from CML, which I understand we are, um, members of, and I'm very appreciative of, um, CML and all of the information and the support that they provide us, um, with that membership. I would just ask that we, um, remain neutral on this. I don't think that we necessarily need to send a letter, um, in support because, um, at least my, my personal, um, feelings here are that, um, I would, I would like for, um, city employees to have the opportunity to, um, participate in collective bargaining. And, um, I do understand the, um, the, um, connection here to this being an unfunded state mandate, but I want to provide every opportunity, um, for, for workers to, to be able to advocate for themselves. And so, um, I would, I would just suggest that we, um, we stay neutral on this one and, and not actually draft a letter.
Additional discussion? Counselor, uh, Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with Counselor Nosler Beck on this. Um, I think, you know, state legislation, especially as it's moving through the legislative process, is complex and gets amended and changes. Um, and I think that, uh, you know, I agree, CML provides a lot of great services and its membership brings a lot of benefits to us. But I think for this, um, I, I also think that if, you know, collective bargaining is something that, uh, our city employees or there's some faction within the city that wants to explore that, I think that that's a dialogue within our city that we could have and, um, and see where that goes. But I think, um, we don't, as a body, we don't really track as counselors what's going on enough and, and have a legislative committee that looks at legislative stuff. And, and I feel a little under-informed about what the actual bill says. I understand CML's position around, um, local control and home rule, uh, state and home run city. So, uh, I'm agreeing about being neutral on it and, um, would not support drafting an opposition letter at this time.
Additional discussion? I think I saw another hand, Ms. Dozeman, and then Mr. Ohm.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I understand, um, the, the points of view of Councilmember Nosler Beck and, and Hulteen. And at this point in time, if there's, uh, hasn't been legislation, um, presented, I, I can, I can see why we would, we would maintain neutrality. But at the same time, uh, you know, CML has been a huge supporter of ours. And I, I have to agree with them on having an unfunded mandate, um, on, on a home rule municipality. Like they're, they're, our, our goal, um, as, as council members, I feel, is to, to represent our city and, and our- is to, to represent our city and, and our rights within that. Um, and I think that home rule municipality is really important. Um, and uh, I don't agree with the legislation, but if we want to remain neutral, I'm fine with that as well.
Mr. Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm aware that there are other items that the state has mandated that the city has said that, well, we're a home, home rule and so we don't have to abide by that. Is this something that even if the state passed, that we could cite home rule and, and not have to comply with that?
Mr. Doll's still on the call. Um, I, I believe it depends on how the legislation's written, if they make it a statewide concern. Um, I don't think we could, um, we could uh, fight against or use home rule status if it's a state, if they make it a statewide concern. Mr. Doll, do you have any comments on that? You're muted.
You're muted.
There, yeah, if you're speaking, you're muted still.
Sorry, it's generally true. The legislature's well aware of the Article 20, the, in the Constitution. Uh, and typically, and I'm sure on this, in fact, I, this on this, there'll be a declaration of statewide concern uh, on the bill. That's not always the end of the discussion, however, because uh, the matter of statewide concern is what is affected by what the legislature says, but the courts have been pretty clear in saying, well, you might say that, but we, we don't agree on this issue. And unless it's articulated in the Constitution as being of, of statewide concern versus local, it's kind of an open question. And the qualifications, et cetera, of municipal offices and employees is in the Constitution, Article 20, and it's something that home rule cities are able to govern. So I think you're, depending again upon how the legislation's actually written. Um, and we don't have that. It, I think it's still available potentially for the city to make the argument. The legislature, if they pass the bill, will I'm sure make it pretty difficult to make the argument. Councilmember Ohm, but it doesn't completely foreclose it.
Is, and my second, no, that's good. Um, my second question is, is would this, with this passing of this uh, cause any erosion of the home rule municipality um, freedom?
Uh, you know, there's the, the, the more the legislature does act and the courts support the legislature in a determination that it is of statewide concern and therefore home rule municipalities can't, can't otherwise legislate. More that happens, the more it does erode. There's been over the last few decades, some erosion of home rule authority in a number of respects. In terms of employment though, uh, I will say that there are examples of cities prevailing. Uh, years ago, the legislature passed a statute that would have prevented home rule cities from requiring their employees to live in the city. Denver, for many years, has had a charter provision saying to work for the city, you've got to live in the city. That got litigated and the State Supreme Court said, doesn't matter what the legislature said, this is a matter of local concern. Denver's charter requirement residency stands. That's why I said, in that particular case, the way it was written as compared with the Constitution resulted in home rule prevailing. That's not always true and we'd have to look at the legislation to see if home rule would prevail here. I'm sure the league will make that argument and it may well get litigated if the bill passes.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess regardless of personal positions on collective bargaining and, and labor issues, I think the, the bigger issue is that, you know, like a council, Councilman Ohm just brought up is, are we willing to be in a position where they can start to chip away at our home rule municipality um, position? And so um, I'm okay with taking neutral now, only because I don't know enough about it and, and need to do some more research, but I realize the optics are terrible. They're terrible. So if anybody's thinking like, oh, political play, we just need to go neutral because we don't want to go on one side or the other, the optics are terrible. Because if you say you're not going to, then you're gonna, then they're gonna say you're, you're against collective labor bargaining. And that's not what it is. We're trying to protect our community and our home rule municipality. So I'm good with neutral right now.
Now, um, uh, Mr. Stites?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll agree with Ms. Hoppy on that as well. I um, collective bargaining aside, I, I don't know that that's really the, the conversation that we're having. It's uh, it is more about the home rule and that's why CML is asking us to, to be opposed to it. Um, so I'm okay right now staying neutral, but uh, as this does move forward, I would lean towards uh, CML's recommendation.
Now, uh, Mr. Goff and, and Mr. Doll, help me out for a minute. Uh, the state doesn't apparently have a law. That's why they would be passing this now in order to preempt uh, home rule cities from uh, or, or to make this mandatory to do this. But there are home rule cities that, that engage in collective bargaining right now, aren't there?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and our city could, could engage in collective bargaining without any legislation in the city. Is that correct?
Absolutely. No ques, no question. Absolutely.
And under, under our rules, um, and I, I think that's one of the concerns is that if the state puts together a fairly strict structure, um, we would have to follow that. Um, and I believe if, if anything does passes, the draft legislation right now says that any local collective bargaining um, terms would go away after they expire and they would have to start following whatever the state puts together.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think we kind of, if
Did you get your, did you get your, your, your marching orders on this?
I did. I don't want to cut any, any discussion off, but I, it sounds like um, at this point, um, council wants to stay neutral until we know more. Um, and we do have, um, March 21st is our legislative session scheduled. And if our, um, if our two representatives come, um, Senator Danielson and Representative Duran, you can um, you can ask them more questions if the bill is still around, so. But otherwise, we will stay neutral. We won't, um, we won't draft anything and, and we'll stay tuned.
Okay.
Thank you very much for that.
Any, anything further in uh, staff reports?
No, nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay, and uh, so for elected officials' reports, is there anything, uh, any, any additional reports before we adjourn our meeting that the counselors would like to bring forward? All right, well, I would like to uh, to uh, thank uh, Rebecca Rudabaugh and Kelly Barker for joining us tonight with a, with a good discussion on our homeless uh, homeless projects, how we're, how we're reaching out to the, uh, to that population and how we're uh, addressing that with respect to our other community members. So I think we've made some progress and I look forward to continuing that. So uh, thank you all for being here tonight. We will be back um, one week from tonight on this, on March the 7th for a, for a um, study session, correct, Mr. Goff?
Correct. You are correct.
Okay, so until then, please drive safely.
Mr. Mayor, just a reminder, that's in person next week.
Yes.
We'll be in person uh, at, at City Council Chambers. Thank you for that clarity. Okay, with that, we will stand adjourned. Be safe and we'll see you next week.